San, you know, with, um, so that's.
I missed it, I thought we found it the other night even though it wasn't here.
Kurt wasn't here.
I know that, but he gave me work papers of Andy.
Yeah. Okay, call meeting to order.
Joan?
Here.
Carl?
Here.
Andy?
Here.
Okay. The President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
All right, so, um, the only thing we have to cover out of A is just the salary, right?
Right.
Um.
Page, page four.
Yeah, page four, funding.
Yeah, so. The personal services I get, um, I did the three percent, which I think everybody was doing in his partner's.
Mm-hmm.
I left the deputy set over, salary the same, equipment the same, contractual the same. Um. The highway garage I left the same. And all that was the same gone through there. The only change in that and the A ton was the, the highway superintendent's cell.
Which was three percent.
Which was three percent.
That sounds about the.
It works for me.
Um. Then it'd be building DA. I didn't put any damage in on the book, that was my fault, I kind of. Um, page one of DA. One of DA. Then if we can, um, so that's my fault. I think it should be the same as what it was last year. We haven't been using last year, but we are going to be.
Yeah.
We're still waiting, um, so now we got to do another study on how many road bridges. What?
Muscle study.
I didn't get that either. Did you send it to me?
Oh, you didn't?
No.
Oh, I'll send it to you. I'm waiting right now.
We did one, but now they say we haven't.
And we have to pay for it, but they didn't give us.
They didn't give us price, so.
Who said?
The state.
State of the art.
Okay, DOT then they said we have to go now.
They're the one C thing actually.
The D.
O P C. Oh.
The D C is requiring another study.
Okay.
Which I hope they did it for their bridge.
Right.
It's on the same track.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that'd be a good question to ask, but anyway, so I think they all stay the same as what they were last year. That, that was, that's my fault. I was busy worrying about all the things in this project.
What did we have last year?
Yeah, fifty thousand or ten thousand per contractual. The bridge reserve was like happens to be like fifty thousand.
Okay.
So are we using money out of the reserve? Will we be if we do some bridge work? Is that where you want to take it from? Is that what you're?
Well, this has been since I've been here, so I don't know if there's a bridge reserve.
Well, I, there's two reserves in DA. I'll have to look, but we, I mean, just because this is here, I, I'm thinking I don't, I just don't want to make the same mistake and get in trouble with the board because I moved something. Um, if it's coming out of reserve, we don't want to book it here because of, it exaggerates what we're using out of fund balance, because we're not using fund balance, we're using a reserve. So I just want to glance at some.
Okay.
Just run to my office.
Yeah.
Um. As far as the, on the machinery, the equipment. I put a question mark on funny, but I handed it in because we need to talk about a few things. The equipment repair, um, line, I left alone. You know, I raised it just a little bit, from sixty-one eight to sixty-five thousand. Just because the price of everything is still.
Yeah.
Oil's going up, tire's going up, everything's. Um. So that was just the increase there. If we go down to miscellaneous brush needs, the men are getting, so for the point one account, that's for payroll. And then I're getting two percent raise this year, so I just took that and I took the point one accounts and raised by two percent. Um, the contractual for brush needs was at fifty-five hundred last year. I put it to six thousand only because of all the dead bastions.
Okay.
Hmm.
We had a lot.
Yeah, we do.
And we, and we've had to use the bucket truck a lot and shoot.
Okay. How many more do you think we have?
Hmm.
Like all other season worth?
Probably, yeah.
How far do you have to remove batteries from the road?
Well, so.
Like, is there a certain, like, sixty feet? Is there a certain?
Well, that's where you get into sticky with it and, and, and because you're, you're going out the right of this, this is where now we had one, one case down on primary road deaths. Don't go back to starting one. And then you get other people like, no, that's my tree.
Yeah.
So it's a case, that case basis.
Yeah.
You know, we just had a tree thing each other, dad. And it, it's one of those deals where the, the truck put the tree, the railways here.
Yeah.
But most of the canopies on us, so, and it started to isolate. But we can't afford to take it down the street. So I said, how about the bucket trucks in the other room anyways, kind of nip some dead branches that makes someone happy.
Yeah.
Sometimes you get a massage and a whatever works. You know, it's not all straightforward.
Exactly, yeah.
And with the trees, you almost have to tree out, which ones are the worst?
Yeah.
You.
They cost money, yeah.
You know, this one's going to stand another year.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Do we, is, do we have to do that as for the county too?
No.
No, they do their own, right?
We are wanting, and this, I get this question a lot, well, you plow the roads and mow the roads.
Well, yeah, and that's why I was just making sure, because I mean, I know we mowed the county roads, but.
They do all, they do all surface treatment, ditching.
Okay.
Um, brush removal. Okay, yeah, they're not with their armhole around their roads and, and, you know, armhole back, but no, we're not.
Okay.
Um, look for any of that. Um. So now we're down to the snow removal, DA fifty-one forty-two point one. There again, two percent increase for the wages for the guys. And on the contractual, you're going to see a big hike. Ten thousand dollars. The salt increase this year, we're waiting on a new contract. It's, that, that, it's illegal right now, but we have the numbers. It's a twenty percent increase. And I was telling Joan before the meeting, but to offset that, we have already purchased out of this year's budget all new blades for the boss, which are a carbide and fraginated rubber blade that flaps through the contour of the road. They scrape much cleaner. And Wolkis running them, Hannibal's running them, Victory's running them. And almost all the guys in the county have switched to them, and they say they're seeing a huge reduction in material that they have to put down for intake icing. That being said, these, these are going to pay their respects. And hopefully that will cut down on the sand and salt usage.
And those are taken out of the twenty-five budget.
They're, yes, they're paid, they're in a bar now.
Got it, yeah.
No, I saved enough in the equipment to buy it on this year. I want it because it's no secret I'm going to be retiring soon.
Oh.
Yeah. That being said, I'm setting guys up for the winter. They don't have to worry about much of any big problems.
Yep.
We got diesel over today.
Not worry about nothing.
Um, I gotta order a set of tires. And then already got all the toilet paper you need for the woman.
Well, that's cold bits.
Well, yeah, totally. You're on your own.
Hey, you have a washer number there, so.
I'm hoping we don't need that number, but we don't know until spring what iron's going to be.
Hmm.
And the sand prices don't come out until March, so.
Yeah.
It just gives us a little bit of cushion, that's all. Anybody have any thoughts on that? It's.
I think that's good planning.
It, it's kind of the path to doing business, so we gotta be prepared for it.
Right. Yeah, and I can remember when you presented about the new blades that you thought it would save.
Everybody I talked to, I talked to Zach that here.
Makes sense.
Um, he said that he, and Pat Coleman said the same thing, that they've reduced, Zach Decker said they've reduced their solubility by half.
That's substantial.
Yeah, but their roads are, you know, their roads, they got some really uneven roads, so that they're using that to melt the snow off. They couldn't scrape.
Right.
Now they can scrape it.
Hey.
And Pat Coleman says that his, his chute doors are down so close now that if they go in and tell you that the apron chain won't.
Wow.
And I saw them sell on the summer, this spring, they used substantially less than needed.
Wow.
So it's time to
Right.
upgrade our equipment.
Oh, good idea.
And we have, we have, we'll have what, four trucks? All four mainline trucks will be set up, did that in probably.
Did we get a delivery date on one?
New, new truck?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, it's slated for November. Would you give us a day?
You didn't give us a day.
Yeah, they can't nail it down that quick, but.
And that's just delivered here, then it has to go get fitted, right?
No, well, it's delivered to their shop. We, so we're working on that too, speaking of, and they have three, two other plants, one in Harris Hills, their main plant, which is back, well, they got two hundred and eighty-five chassis sitting up there right now waiting to get suited. They have one in Connecticut and they have one in Virginia. Which I guess their turnover rate is fair. So we're working on maybe having that truck drop shipped. They're, they're all Viking plants, it's all Viking employees, it's all Viking iron. Just different locations. So we're working on trying to figure out which one maybe you could get that truck sooner. Is that the truck? I mean, that's an old four.
Yeah.
It's, it's twenty, twenty-one years old.
That's why I was wondered, like, well, hopefully we get.
And we played West game, we played that card with, with the salesman, it's like, we're replacing a twenty-year-old truck. So that option, we haven't heard back, but we're working on.
Okay.
Um, that being said, when the truck is built, um, I've got that right here. When the truck is built, the truck's built November, um. And when it hits the lot, where it's going to go, if we pay for it, there's a five thousand dollar discount on the truck.
Right.
And we're going to pay for it anyways, it's coming out of that reserve account, right?
That's just for the truck.
That's not the, we don't have to pay for it at all.
Yeah.
Just the, there'd be, instead of a hundred and eighty-five thousand, it would be a hundred and eighty thousand for the cabin chassis.
Yeah.
Which, I mean, you can save five grand, you can save five grand.
Yeah, absolutely.
But that money, we already went through that, out of that reserve, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
What did you find out on the bridge reserve?
What I was trying to explain that if we're going to use reserve, we wouldn't, um, put it here anyways. Otherwise it distorts the figure because that would show us that we were picking that out of fund balance, which we did that last year, then I fixed it real, you know, and it was questioned because I made a fix. So we'll go in to this column and it's something I have to do as an account number I'll use, so it shows up here, so it doesn't show that you're using fund balance to support that.
Okay.
That purchase. It shows us coming out of our reserve, so you wouldn't put it here. I put it behind the scenes kind of, you know, populate here on the summary for the budget. What would you anticipate that to be?
Um, the bridge was estimated about fifty?
Fifty? Yeah, fifty thousand. Well.
No.
Contractual and the bridge reserve is sixty.
Right, and we figured that's about what that's, yeah, objects and costs.
Okay, so you want to take the whole sixty out of reserve? Is that what you're saying?
We don't, we don't know yet. We, it hasn't gone on, I mean, that's, that was the projected cost.
That's projected, but.
Right, I'm just saying if I'm.
We don't know about this muscle study and how much that's going to be and.
Yeah.
Well, also I'm asking if you, you guys have a dollar amount, or did you want me to put some?
No, sixty thousand is what.
Okay, that's what I'm.
So, I mean, if, if it comes out for more than that, then we'll have to do a, a budget amendment.
Yeah, I'm not worried, I just.
Yeah, you're right, right, right.
Yeah, just.
If I'm reading in my, um, report roughly right now in the bridge account, we have what, two hundred and twenty-two thousand? In the, in the bridge reserve, yes.
Okay.
So are we putting anything?
It's just.
Are these going to stay zero?
No, I, I don't.
Right, but these are going to stay zero then.
That's going to stay so, that's why I didn't want to.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure.
We did that last year and I fixed it and both. I just want to make sure everybody knows this number.
Okay, do you want to go back up and talk about DA fifty-one thirty point two, the equipment?
Mm-hmm.
So it's not a secret that the tractor that we got, that was bought with Chip's money, is not doing very well. We lost reverse in today.
Wow.
Which is controlled by electronics.
Hmm.
It's due to go back. I got to call one right now to the company. This thing has been ongoing. Um, it's been broke down more than it's been going, at least it seems that way in my head, but it's off of warranty now, I'm feeling low down on that, trying to get the fact that it's not the only issue.
Thank you.
I've talked to the highest representative that I can. And I'm going to now pen out the letter to the owner of the company.
Well, seven years?
Java Farm Equipment, they're a master business.
Okay.
Used to be White Farms Supply.
Yeah.
They, they got bought up by a company named up in Wisconsin, Java, but so the issue is we are married to this tractor for ten years because it was bought with Chip's money.
Mm-hmm.
Is it a Massey Harris?
Huh?
Is it a Massey Harris? I mean, Ferguson. Newskeeper.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, what's?
So.
That's by rules of the check.
Yes, yeah, so you can buy, you can buy equipment with Chip's money as long as it's deemed through chips as having a ten-year lifespan. You can't buy a pickup, but you can buy a pile truck.
Yeah.
You can buy a tractor. That being said, this town, the last two pile trucks and that tractor have been bought with our highway one. Which to me does not make any sense.
No.
The town, other than two pickups, the town hasn't bought with town money and equipment since two thousand eighteen. With the exception of two thousand nineteen, they bought a pickup and then in twenty-four, they bought a pickup. So we need to turn that around. So this year alone we used a lot of Chip's money for our paving to the point of so our eligibility on our roads, which means that you can't use Chip's money for ten years. So if you pave a road with Chip's money, you can't use Chip's money on that road for another ten years. So you have an eligibility list. So our eligibility got kind of upside down. And that's why I think they were buying equipment with our Chip's money. But Chip's money builds. You can build it up.
Yeah.
So I stopped, I didn't buy any, put enough of Chip's money, I let it build. So this year, we paved all the state. We did Old State, we did Aker, we did New Street. And we got reimbursed three hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents with the paving that the state paid for.
Okay.
That being said, we still have two hundred and forty-eight thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-five cents in rollover. So next year, if we get appropriated the same amount as we got this year, which was two hundred and ninety-one thousand and some change. You know, you're looking at the town having, uh, around five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of state money to pave roads that are eligible. So what we need to do is get back to spending our money on our equipment, and that way we have control of when it goes and when it comes, you know, when because we could, we can't swap that tractor now.
Right. Yeah, we can't even sell it on Facebook marketing.
We can't, no. We can't, we, if they do an audit, they, I turned in my inventory report, that's on the inventory report, it has to be there. That being said, I would like to buy, or like the town, not, the town, to buy another new tractor. Get this one fixed as a backup. And, you know, this time of year, when things are slow, we got two guys at home. Or in the spring, if we get behind because of the weather, two guys go off. But I think it's as far as the safety factor goes, I think it's just important to have our roads mowed as it is probably. Because of the deer, this, the, not being able to see through interception.
I do appreciate the mowed roads, the, the deer, essential.
Well, right.
Yeah.
But, you know.
Appreciate it on the green road, because I can always tell the old state boat, I get down there and I'm going, oh, time to.
If that wasn't, if that wasn't mowed, there'd be, it'd be a
Right.
A crap shoot while they're making it.
Exactly.
So we actually worked out really weird, we, I got quotes on tractors, um. And there was one that was sparking my interest, and the state actually came into town with a brand new John Deere loan tractor.
Right.
And so we were going to go, we were talking at the coffee, we were going to go pull him over and take over his truck, so he went aside, and, and, you know, I opened over at the door, he's sitting out there with a gun in the back. So we got to look it over. So I got four quotes. Um, two of the quotes are fifty-one hundred series deer, which is a smaller frame tractor. And then we got a quote on a sixty-one oh five E, which the state has, nice size. And they give me a, a good tractor. Um, the fifty ones are a smaller frame tractor. I think they're working, they're working harder than a bigger frame tractor to do the job. So, and then there was one that we just, we wanted to look at it. And it was just out of, out of the park. It was the six M one oh five. And price was double the top and tracked two.
Yeah.
And, you know, so.
Too big a tractor, not big a mow.
Right.
Right.
It, it, you know, if it had, it was probably there, it wasn't set up with iron yet. It was probably there for triple level for doing like the throughway.
Yeah.
You know, mediums doing really wide.
Yeah.
We're not worried about trees and brushing.
Right.
I'll tell you, with a big tractor, it really sucks when the ditch bank goes out because they're so heavy.
Yeah.
That's why Hannibal has, they have a sixty-one ten. It's, it's, it's just too big.
So we, I mean, all the guys and, you know, we've all been looking at these, we don't, we have to do something, and we're all in agreeance that that's the one that we, we value. Sixty-one.
Oh, five.
A oh five E.
Yeah.
So the, the lowest float was one thirty, no, one twenty-four, and that was a small forty-power small tractor. I wouldn't even consider that. This is with, well, this is with Brandon Morris, this full. Um, the fifty-one oh five M came in at one thirty-five five. And then the sixty-one oh five E, which is the bigger frame tractor. And we liked the way that the new iron was mounted on it. That was at one thirty-eight five. So I think for the three thousand dollar difference between those two mile tractors.
And isn't there a caveat to that too, that it has to be purchased by November?
So it doesn't have to be. The deer is going up four percent as of November first.
Right.
The price of the four percent on, on purchase that big is, is enough.
Yeah.
But also, the longer we wait the delivery time, because the order is starting to stack up. Now, the deer that we sold, this, this tractor is comparable to the deer that was traded in on this massive, it worked beautiful for us for twelve years. And if you think about it, if you get twelve years out of a tractor at that price the county's paying its ten grand a year to move it, just the roads. So they're going to be big, you know. But it, it just, this, this tractor's consumed way too much of our time trying to keep it running. It's, this is, I mean, we had diodes that are melting out of the fuse box. And now finally they say, they admitted to me that they've had to change the burden happens on this model truck.
No, if you got a nightmare and it's not going to work for you, then I'm liable, it's it's not good, right?
I think at some point, we're going to probably be able to turn the corner onto this thing. I mean, but the problem is, we don't, we thought we were on to something. And then all of a sudden it started again with storing all sorts of codes on the dash.
Do we, I hear a question, uh, do we have this money?
Yeah, we have more money in the reserves, if that's, did you want to, what was a dollar now?
It's.
One thirty-eight five?
One thirty-eight five.
We have healthy fund balance. Would it be DA, DA Pat?
Yeah, we have a healthy fund balance and, and really basically both DA and DB, but I didn't know, I thought we were trying to dwindle down our reserves and start fresh because we've.
Well, I'm not done yet, Pat. But that being said, so that would be, no, I'm not, no, I'm, I'm, I'm not, I'm not done with equipment.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
Yeah, you've got my support.
Well, so, so.
Just it needs.
So that would be, so that would be come out of a DB account, correct?
The tractor?
If we took money out of fund balance, still.
Yeah, I mean, the DA and DB, I mean, DA, we have a reserve for equipment. We have two, two reserves for equipment in the DA, which can buy equipment, you know, and we have the bridge reserve, so right there is two, three, four hundred and forty thousand dollars in reserve. That's just in the DA.
Okay, and according to the, the report I have for, uh, the end of August, our available fund balance, if I'm interpreting this correctly, Pat, um, for DA, seven hundred thirteen thousand plus. DB one million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand.
That's everybody.
I don't know if the account board members know, but.
Well, the thing is, even you looking at where we are.
Right.
I, I want everybody to understand when.
I understand about reserves.
I, I, I know you do, yeah, I just. Yeah, yeah, fund balance is basically your free cash, anything in your savings and your, your checking account. That's really every time you look at your supervisor's report, you see checking, savings, that's basically at that time, that's what's in your fund balance.
Yes.
So.
But we have reserve, yeah, four hundred.
That being said, so because we, and I'm, I'm just jumping ahead a little bit. So in the DB fifty-one ten point four, the contractual, that's the, the general repair, that's their, our roadwork money. But because we're able to use so much chip's money this year that
Right.
I got about ninety thousand dollars in that account that I probably will not be using. I got, I bought diesel fuel today, um, and, but what I'm saying is I anticipated maybe using some of that towards a tractor.
Yeah, I mean, you, you have, like, we have a healthy reserve and a healthy, healthy fund balance, you can basically do anything.
Right.
So.
Yeah.
You got my support.
So you answered my question is we've got the most.
We do, so whatever you need, and we have everybody's support, I think that
Yeah.
just tell us what you need, right?
Yeah, so, um.
We're all at the point of the shopping wars.
Which might really undermine our, our shopping, but when I say it wasn't done up, because we still got to talk about the pile equipment on that truck. Um, but I, you have in the reserve accounts for equipment, you, you know, that's another hundred and twenty-five thousand. But I mean, we committed to buying the truck, it's over, it's going to be here next month.
And if we don't have it reserved, we have any fund balance, so we are not, we're very, very healthy town.
And we're not getting slapped on the hand for it, which boggles my brain. Twenty years ago, we got called on the car by L Y C for having too much in fund balance, so this pay, if we can have it fun.
So, and like I say, I'm going to be retiring, but I'm trying to get these guys.
Well, at the same time, by using it, then we're not going to get slapped on the hand too.
Correct, exactly.
By using our money to buy equipment and saving the state money for paving roads.
Yeah.
Because the road's going to be there ten years from now. If a pothole shows up, we don't fix the pothole, but the road's still going to be there.
Yeah.
Right.
It's not going to stop running tomorrow.
Right.
For the tractor money, but.
No, we need to help it to new part, for sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, so.
Can't have a naked truck.
Right, right. Um, let's see, so, um. I was the one, are we still on DA? Did I, did, did we cover, uh, services for other governments?
I don't think you got that far. You were at the power or season.
No, we're on to some, that's where, okay, so the services for other governments is basically the same as the uh, two percent increase on the personal service. And, uh, I, I put an extra ten grand on the contractual because that, I use those two accounts for buying sand and salt. And, and fuel, we be, you know, during the winter, we are going to, obviously. Like I say, I'm hoping we don't need those numbers.
Yeah.
No, you're, you're doing the right thing. We can't be blindsided. The other way.
Well, it's like last winter, you know, we, we went through six winters of mild winters and everybody's like, ah, you know, it's going to be, we're willing, then it.
Plan for it.
We got.
Plan for it.
If, if we plan for it and don't use it great, but if we plan for it needed, then.
Yeah.
Okay, that covered my portion of DA, right?
Mm-hmm.
And on the DB. I have a fifty-one ten point one. Uh, once again, two percent for the, the month's wages. The contractual, I left alone. Because that's the one count that I have[1782.00] Used up. And I don't, if we can continue with the chip program that we're on, we shouldn't, we need to, but. We got, our eligibility has started to come back, but. It's just a comfort zone right now. Any questions on that? Well. So, Pat, this is where we're gonna need some help on the, the DB fifty one twelve point two, the cap, uh, the chips.
Yes.
So, I put three hundred thousand in there, but we're gonna have. Um. There's two hundred, two hundred and forty eight thousand. Five, five hundred forty one dollars of, of rollover money right now in our account.
That you're not collecting on this year?
Correct. We got back the reimbursement that, that, uh, we, everything we paid. So. But if we get with no increase, we get what we got last year, we get two hundred ninety one thousand, that's gonna put that over half a million. I don't know how to, should we? Should we up that three hundred thousand to half a million? I mean, I don't know.
Do you think you're gonna collect it all?
Probably not. What if I, what if they go to three hundred thousand?
Doesn't it roll if you don't use it all, but?
Oh, yeah.
That's what I mean.
Well, I'm just wondering if we need to put in a different number in of the budget than the three hundred thousand.
I mean, we can, it's available, but you just wanna make sure if you're gonna hit the three hundred on the expenditure budget, you wanna hit the three. Go over three hundred on the revenue, revenue, so it doesn't distort the numbers. You wanna make sure the revenue, the. For chips and the expenditure for chips at the same number, otherwise it'll distort. Because they go hand in hand.
Okay, but if you get the money back in the same budget year, does it go back into that or no?
Yeah, I mean.
I, I just didn't know if we should up that three hundred thousand, because there's a couple of long roads that are coming up next year that. That's gonna be on this guy, but.
I'm just saying that if, if we're gonna hit the expenditure and up that, I would up the revenue, otherwise it's gonna, or up the expenditure, otherwise it's gonna show that you're taking money out of fund balance. When you're gonna get reimbursed for whatever, whatever you spend, so I'm just saying.
I know it's gonna be a wash at the end of the day, I just want the paperwork to look great.
Yeah, I, I. You probably could up that to four hundred and then up the revenue to four, to four hundred.
Not what I was trying to think, huh? To even it out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't want it lopsided.
I mean. I think that, you know, that's kind of the number I had in my head.
Yeah.
Um, this year. Old state road was a hundred and ninety thousand. That was a big project. That was one twenty eight miles.
Because even if we decided to make a change or do something, you're gonna, if you spend more, you can modify the budget, you know, you're, you'll modify it on both sides.
By the two eighty four agreement and, yeah.
You'll modify the revenue and the expenditure, and so they, they are, they're a wash. I mean, basically, that's not our money. It, New York State's paying for those, so they have, I just like to see them go hand in hand, so it doesn't show that it's coming from taxes or whatever.
You know, I get it, I get it, that's why I asked, you know, that's, that's what it do.
If you, if you, if you wanna. Raise it, I'd raise both, um, both sides, say raise to four hundred.
Mm-hmm.
And if we don't spend it, it'll roll into fund balance. And if we go over, then we'll modify the budget, but we'll get reimbursed, so it'll be modified.
I mean, are you guys in agreement to that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, it boggles my mind. I don't know, must be I didn't catch it before, but it, it rolls overs, because typically. Federal, state, you don't use it, you lose it.
Oh, no, no, no.
And, but chips, I don't, and I don't remember the history of that stuff, but what I do remember is. Concerns about the chips funding from Albany, saying, well, maybe it's, but. It sounds like.
So, a lot of people think that, oh, don't use it, it might not be there, but it's already appropriated money. They might cut down, they might cut the amount of new appropriations, but money's already appropriated. It'll, it'll take a nap at Congress pretty much for it to get out. I think you can burn that with both our, yeah. So.
Okay.
Right now.
Get that, right, and then, right, sometimes the concern would be that the chip's funding would be questionable. I can remember going to training for that was.
Right, and I, I've said.
But you're saying we're.
Yeah, I've talked to a state lady, a representative, um, multiple times about this. And I've been to every class that's been available at any of our training.
Hurts like the state, the lady that runs the church program for the state, she loves him.
Oh, sure.
But, so, what, and what she explains to me is a lot of these villages that only have a few miles of road, they don't get much appropriations.
Right.
They build it up over five or six years and then go through and pay the road.
Right.
So, it gives them more bang for the.
Right, 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 yes, I'm sorry, we're on a little tangent.
Oh, no, no, I, no, listen.
This is a different sense from.
The chip program is something that, I mean, I've, I've been hammering on him, you've got, I mean, it's.
Maximize that.
Yes. Um. And it's not that hard, and they, they, the, the, the chips people that represent our area are pants ass, will, will help you. You know, whatever, whatever takes it, they understand this is money that's appropriate for us and they wanna see it being moved. So. So, okay, we're gonna up that, up that to four hundred thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, uh.
DB three five zero one as well.
Say it again?
I want to be three five zero one as well.
Oh.
Where, uh, where are you, what is the next page back?
Yeah, down here, down for state aid.
Both paper and.
Thanks, your honor. All right, down here, are you doing the revenue side of that?
We'll add a hundred to each.
Right.
Yeah, I know. Eleven.
Oh, oh, okay, actually, yeah, okay.
We're there.
And the revenue page?
Right, but it's down on line thirty five oh one.
Yeah.
Good, yeah, good, yeah.
And I see who being the sales tax, three hundred.
Consolidated highway. Okay, so. And another one I missed was, uh, is my bad, um, machinery, DB five one. Three zero point two, that actually was a ten, I forgot to write that in, and.
Which one?
Five one machinery.
What equipment would that be for DB fifty one thirty point two?
Mislenious equipment we need for, for, you know, I don't. Or. I, I don't wanna use it, but in case we need to like, so like a new, uh, compactor or something like that.
And we need a lawnmower.
Huh? Lawnmower, sure, you know, I mean, small.
Okay.
Yeah, I will tell you that our, our compactor is getting. To the end of its lifespan, I think, don't you?
The tamper?
Tamper.
Yeah, leaks oil, like I said.
That's, so that would be what, small, 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 small.
And what are you, what are you putting that at?
Well, same as it was last year, ten, so ten.
Are you gonna do a resolution panel when we get done today with all the changes that, okay, good.
Okay. That's. One less than something, I think that's about it. Oh, the, the, the soniest, uh, brush release, the DB fifty one forty point one. Um, same thing, add two percent little piece on that. And then the contractual I raised is a thousand, and there again, it's just because of the trees that we, we think the town's gonna be faced and taken down. Because of that, I don't know, ash for, which, it's not just us, every town in the county are all.
Oh, sure.
I mean, it, it's everywhere, and it's, it, it, it'll be probably a two or three year deal, you know, till they're gone.
There will be an ash tree left at our bees.
No, no, I mean, it's. And, and, and so not only do you have the ash trees, but you still have the other problem trees that.
They're bracked.
So, now, Carmen has been real, he's our tree guy, he's been really good, uh, I think his rates are really varied. He was on the county bid, the tree work. And he's worked with us, he likes to. When it's dry out, he's doing homeowner stuff, but when it rains, he can sit in the road and do our trees, so he kinda, I think, gives us a good shape.
Do we sum that out then? Is that what I?
So, the, some of it, we do what we can, but some of these big, gnarly, especially like West State earlier, we had Carmen come down and he's dropped them down below the power lines. Cause they were so, you know, you're talking about a ninety foot tree.
Right.
And yet, and so he just dropped them down, and then we finished taking them down from there.
Okay.
But it was one of those deals where he took them down a piece and then they dropped them straight down there. And I'll, and be honest with you, they're starting to get punky on the inside, and. I don't really want, the guys don't need that.
No.
It's, so.
Does he charge by the day or the job?
By the day.
How much a day, roughly?
It's one seven hundred and fifty a certain day. I can look it up, it's on accounting bid. Maybe it's less than. But we also, we save money by loading the brush out. On ourselves, cause you got the gravel to load, it's great. So, he doesn't have to check the brush and move the brush, he just knocks it down, we get rid of the strip and stuff. So, we kinda work side by side, and then we get it better, get more done. If it's true, it's a doing all.
I like the fact to use him. Having the guys chainsaw that treats the reverberation of a chainsaw, lots of them fall, many loggers will kill them in that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You got a professional with a bucket truck and everything, use them, yeah.
Yeah, and he's got the insurance, he's on the county bid. You know, and we've done a lot of trees.
Then we use a swig of time to do the stump grinding.
Yeah.
Which is a mutual agreement, so.
Yeah, actually, we just, we just had it here in town, we ground two and a half stumps, then the machine broke. Two and a half stumps. So. Then that's, there's no money out of pocket for that, I mean, we just swap services for that.
So, but.
So. Any questions? You get all that?
I got all that.
Your core, you know, I checked them out. So, basically, I'm not sure, other than I put that, I mean, it's pretty much staying the same, except the salt and the sand, and that is how it is.
Yeah, I was still on kind of a five year plan for those snowplows. I know at one time that's what the intent was, so that's important.
Yeah, we are kinda getting off that a little bit.
Actually.
Well. Yes and no. We had another truck roll into the, into the rotation, to the village.
Right.
And that's the one we're replacing with this truck to do this.
Oh, that, that's the one that's been on lemon?
No, 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 that's the tractor, that's the fire. No, that's, we bought, we bought their used truck.
Okay.
And we've been calling the village where they're used, their, their truck, that we own. But, um. So. Skippy was instrumental in laying this truck out pretty bad, because we are going with a ten wheeler with a setback front axle that we took. Joe's, Joe's truck, which has a setback, it turned tighter.
Okay.
So, that truck is what's spec'd out to call the village, with a four way following front. But, that being said, that six wheeler sits all summer and doesn't do anything. It's over ten wheel, really, really use it for a road.
Okay.
So, it's kind of a.
Right.
Getting a double purpose truck instead of a single purpose truck. So. We probably could've got a six wheeler a smidge cheaper, but then it'd sit for half the year.
You got, you got my support.
So.
Yes, I know.
Listen, I mean, I, I don't, and these guys have been involved in everything we do up there, I, I, we talk about everything over coffee in the morning, so any, all these things are things that the guys. Have been involved in.
Right, right.
So.
We talk over coffee in the morning, were they on the clock? That's before we check it, got it, okay, just check.
Check their temp terms. You'll love to see cotton break out, I guarantee you.
We have camera footage of the coffee room.
Sure. Um. You guys want a copy of the tools and tractors? I, I just got this one.
Well, well, we're gonna go down and, leave it with Tanya and then put it in a board package.
And I apologize for not having seen this, but I just literally got this a couple days ago.
And I put, um, under the window, yeah. Perfect, now, your presentation nailed it. I don't need, uh.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm, yes, so, do you wanna?
Yeah, and we were able to just look at that tractor Monday, it's up there, so we didn't know they're, they're the biggest one there.
Which is too big. And, and so we wanted, so the guys went up to the, the dealership and they laid eyes and looked at the tractors that, you know, you. Buying something off a computer, uh, go look at it.
You generally know a lot more about tractors than I do.
Well, these guys will, I mean, they're the ones that gotta run them, yeah.
Exactly.
So, but. That's the one that we all agree that would do the best job for the town's tree. And obviously, the state's got one. I mean, that's, it's a damnable to the one, so.
Yeah.
Out back of the barn right now.
Yeah.
It couldn't happen to that in a better time.
Won't be a damnable, that one. That's got green star on it, shit.
Well, yeah, well. Yeah, you don't need green star.
No.
But. Okay. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pleasure doing business.
Now you can go have dinner.
Right.
Did they give you the back of your phone when we're looking at the tractor too?
Oh, no, that's just mine.
I won't say.
All right.
We want to go to the S D S I. Um, so the sewer district, the nest, um, finance. How, I really can't allow the same forty five hundred, seventy, forty thousand. Appropriation. I just like to build the fund balance a little, in case anything comes up, any kind of. Infrastructure. Um. As far as, uh, SF one, two and three. Uh, the color fire department, and he said that the contract was gonna be the same. I looked with the county on the, um. Workers comp, they don't have a figure yet, so I increased it by two percent to be on the safe side, since that sort of went up last year. But I just, um, called Pam again on Friday, and she still, they don't, haven't settled on what that cost is gonna be. But we have a little bit of a fund balance in there, so if it went over. So. That's for SF one, two and three.
You want to begin a song?
And then, um, the S L one and two, I just took where we are here today for what we spent. And just divided it out and then multiply it times twelve and kinda got an average.
Is that, that include the. Increased rates? Of R G and E?
I marked it up a little.
I just know that they've been talking about raising rates next year, so. They haven't come out with a number yet.
Um.
They're waiting to get it cleared through the.
I mean, if you think we should go up more, huh? And whatever.
No, I mean, they didn't.
I just.
That, that, that should. That should be sufficient, I mean.
The lighting districts I really. Kind of battle with is, you just never know, I know that. My sex done a quite a bit. But, I mean, whatever anybody thinks, do you think that we should go higher?
No, I think. I think that's enough for now.
And I'm looking to fund balance in, uh, lighting districts, is that? Just kinda, I, I didn't bring that information out, I don't know if it's right here, but. I know sometimes we used to have to remember how we would, uh, say, oh, let's spend down some of your fund balance in the lighting districts. I mean, we're talking about. Small, small amount.
There's, yeah, there's nothing.
I know we did that also with SF one, two, three, because we really, SF one, two and three should be an N and an O.
Right, because that's so attractive, so.
At the, at the sliding districts, I know sometimes, well, that's getting up, let's put a few dollars.
For the fund balance, but I don't have any information right in front of me, but you would know that, so I'm not losing soup for living.
Well, if it stayed the same, I mean, like I said, the way I kinda work it is, I'll take that, see where I'm on S L one, and we're looking at where we are here today. By eight, multiply it times twelve, I have a couple cents, but if you think it's gonna go up a lot more, I haven't got any.
No, they haven't, they haven't come out with what the rates are gonna be. They're waiting to get approval from the government right now.
Yeah, and I don't, I have, I don't have a fund, I pull those two or I look at them every month, fund balance analysis, I like to see where it's gonna be.
Yeah, because the issue would be if we had the over spend.
Right, I know there ain't some kind of fund balance, but I, I think it's not that huge.
Yeah. I know, we try not to keep it too huge, but then on the other hand. It's much better to have that than if you have spend more on a lighting district, and like, oops, where does it come from?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and the S W one, I did make a change because I got thinking, the fund balance. In S W one is like a one, five, six thousand dollars, we. And I talked to Andy and what we really should have been doing is putting money away, we should have increased our taxes. Not just. Make tech, you know, bring money in, it's gonna go right back out the door.
Right.
We weren't building a fund down, so if anything happens, we're kind of.
Yeah, if we have a man break or something like that.
So. When, and that fund, I think there was six thousand dollars, and that's pretty sad because I think that fund was established at least six years ago. Five, six years, not longer, and that's all we've gained is six thousand.
Yeah.
So we really weren't doing things right, but I never really. Thought about or got into the water.
Right.
Till Andy came and tells me and educates me on a lot of things, so I ran it by him, he agreed. So I did, I am making that change, it's five thousand dollars.
It's a nice looking, um. Water district, where are you?
Well, water district one.
Yeah.
Okay, and I also, I increased the. I'm not, that's the only change that I was making, that was on this report.
Oh, okay.
But the, the reason I want a little bit more on the, um, appropriation is because I. Talked to Aqua and they're gonna go a several percent increase on one, I just like that, water hydrants. So I got that figure.
You were making change that wasn't on here, is it?
The only change I'm, I'm just explaining that, but there is a change I, we're. Um, increasing the five thousand dollars.
She's gotta pull it in.
But I have to make a. Put that on my.
Well, the other girls will list at, at, at other towns, the changes I just noted that we didn't, you know.
Yeah, it's not in here.
Yeah, I have listed. What was it? Which number?
It's SW. One, zero, zero, one property taxes, I'm increasing that by five thousand dollars.
Zero, zero, you said?
One, zero, zero, SW one, so that's our property taxes, I'm increasing that by five thousand, so I, I did that.
Right, so that, that's what's in the budget. Right? The two thousand twenty six budget, SW one, the one, five district one. So it looks like it's five thousand.
And the SW water district one. Ra- raised by taxes is now fif- is fifty eight thousand six sixty, I'm raising it by five thousand dollars. Okay, so that's what I.
Okay.
Wanted to know, because there's a change.
Right.
The tentative, and she needs to know that, and then I can go over with the changes if you don't get.
So I'm on the revenues, S one, two, there, one, and the budget. For twenty twenty five. Um, fifty three, say fifty three thousand, proposed budget fifty eight thousand, and you said. It was five thousand dollars more.
I'm adding five thousand, it's not on this budget.
Instead of being fifty eight thousand six hundred.
Because we're still on the first tentative.
Thank you. Sixty three thousand six hundred and sixty.
Right.
She's saying it's going to be.
It's not on the budget, that's what I'm trying to tell.
It hasn't been put in here.
Right, so it'll be in when I do my minutes for tonight, it'll be in there.
Right.
Okay.
Because we're still on the first, the tentative, that I wanna make, make changes and bring anything new that we hadn't talked about, so I left that. Any changes I made or wanna make, I wanted to just note it. And, um. There's another change that I have to make on the A fund. It's, uh, for health insurance. Talked to Andy, I didn't realize. On the retirees. That we pay up to age sixty seven or sixty eight.
Fifty five.
Sixty five. And I thought it was sixty two, we did, and I, maybe I just did, and I did the calculation. Because I thought Lisa was sixty two, she'd be coming up, but it's. To sixty five. So I had to put her in there. So that's thirteen, an additional thirteen thousand five thirty three eighty.
That will go in. Line item is, is that eight ninety sixty point eight under helping?
Point eight one for retirees, cause she's.
Okay. What were you saying you were increasing on?
I'm increasing it by thirteen thousand five thirty three eighty four. I didn't do the, uh, it's with the math on that, I did on the water, but.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, that's, so it's increased by that, it was twenty seven five sixty eight.
And the new figure will be. Hang on a minute. So it'll be forty one, one on.
Yep. Did you get that forty one, one on one?
Thanks.
Yeah.
Really been eighty percent off, not rounding it out?
I, I rounded, I mean, just, so I put forty one, one on one, just. It's easier, it's cleaner on here. Any questions?
That's just the property tax and the health insurance, are the two.
There's, and then I, I put something into the reserve that he wants to use reserve money and I didn't wanna. Forget, so I can give, and then we add a three thou- three hundred, it's gonna be an extra hundred thousand on the chips DB.
Yeah, I got his stuff, it was just this stuff after he left. So I already got his, I got his, um, the DB five one thirty point two, the DB thirty five zero one. DB five one one two point two. So it's just those.
And I mean, we're using reserve, so I didn't want to go to here, so there's the changes of a sheet.
Yeah.
No questions, Jer. I don't have any more.
You have anything, Joe? No, no, you've been really patient with me and you answered.
No.
As I've asked, and I appreciate that. So we'll do these resolutions tonight, is that? Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause I'll be on that.
Okay, I'm gonna need you. Okay, so. Need a resolution. To increase the capital chips in consolidated highway to four hundred thousand.
Line item, I would definitely put the line item in.
DB five one, one, two dot two to four hundred thousand. DB three five zero one to four hundred thousand. And then. Um, increase DB five one three zero dot two to ten thousand. And increase SW one zero zero one. To sixty three thousand six sixty. And. Increase. Eight nine zero six zero dot eight one to forty one thousand one oh one.
Did we get out, did we get out of them?
I was looking through it, um, the only other one was where I'm. Putting an entry in that shows money coming out of the reserve, that's the part that we had last year where I did it, thinking it was no big deal, cause it's in the appropriation, so I want everybody to know. There's, if. The one that, um. We were talking about that we wanted to spend money to buy a truck and I says we can take it out of reserve. I think it was, um, DA, and I have sixty thousand dollars that will be coming out of, so when you get the cover sheet. Rather than being in the appropriation, which is what I did, it'll fall here.
There'll be another.
What, what account is it, DA?
It's like zero nine one or something, it's a really odd, it's just to, to.
So sixty thousand is from DA zero nine one.
It's kind of like the behind the scenes.
So that's, that would be DA, right?
Correct.
And that was how much?
Sixty thousand.
That's getting removed to where?
Oh, it's being moved to the.
Oh, to, from reserves.
Yes.
I'll just be making the entry in the budget module, that, that will do, will show that there's, we're spending money out of the reserve, not out of fund.
Okay, I'll make that resolution.
I'll second. Joe?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
So does this mean we don't need to have our third?
Right.
Special meeting?
Right.
Okay, so that probably means, means to be communicated to the public, I know that you qualified it and said, if needed, but. We might wanna make that formal.
I'll make a motion for adjournment meeting.
So then I'll do the prelim, you give it.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
You do the prelim of the board meeting and.
Yeah. Yeah, I could blow up the public hearing, we already have the.
Bing, bing, bing.
You have a second for motion.
Oh, for a German?
Yes.
A second.
Now, it's a prelim allowed.
Okay.
To go out, I'm sorry.
You're good, keep going.
Allowed to go out to the, to you guys before the meeting, am I allowed to put it in your map box? I don't wanna do anything.
I think it's gotta go.
Well, you've been doing ours for.
No, I think you gotta get them out at the meeting.
Okay, I just. I just remember last year some, I did something wrong, so I just didn't wanna.
Yeah, we need to be real clear on that. Is that the paper for? Yeah, Joe?
Huh?
Is that the paper, Patty?
That's the one, printout, similar to the one, just we'll look at the one.
Right, it's the town budget calendar.
Okay.
She has one and I have one. The town board makes revisions and prepares the preliminary budget, the preliminary budget is filed with the town clerk. And then there's a public hearing, but the public needs to have access to that preliminary budget.
That's what I'm saying is.
At the hearing is when they get it.
Ooh.
That's, that's how it was done last year and that's where.
Oh, I need to be clear on that because of the purpose of the hearing, it's about for the public.
That's why I was asking if.
Yeah, I mean, I, if it's legal to do it that way, I'm almost positive, we tried to do that last year and it was like, no.
I'll look into it and I will, I'll contact other towns and, um, some of. Higher clerks.
I would suggest AO two.
Yeah.
I have a chart I gave her and I have a, it's, it's a little bit more detailed, I think, than what you're looking at.
Right.
Um, I just. Yeah, we'll figure it out, I'll be here tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying a hundred percent sure, but when you have a, a public hearing on something. And it's on the preliminary budget, I would think that. The public would be, have access to the preliminary.
They'll do get my minutes too, like when we changed this, I put it in my minute. So they get part of it. So I'll look into it and figure it out.
Yeah, make sure that, yeah, it's real important to me.
Yeah.
That as long as we're following that, that the public is aware of what's going on and there's not the perception. That the town doesn't wanna share.
Yeah, I'll look into it. All right, uh. Go on, favor.
Hi.
Bye.
I just remember last year there was something specific around that, that.